City Council meeting being August 22nd, 2023, 6:00 PM. I call it to order. We're going to move on to item two. Invocation will be given to us by Pastor Steve Crone of First Baptist Church, followed by item three, Pledge of Allegiance in the Texas Pledge, and we'll be led by Councilmember Haney. Pastor, when you come forward. Anybody wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so. Just jump on.
Pastor, the church is yours.
All right. Ready for a sermon, right? Very good. Yeah, I'm kidding. Thank you.
God's everywhere.
That's right. Well, it's an honor to be here. Thank you so much. And I just want to say from on behalf of our church, we are so thankful for you and what you do. And we pray for you a lot. Okay, so let's bow our heads in prayer. Father God, we just thank you for tonight. God, thank you for this opportunity we have to serve you in mighty ways, Lord. We love our community. We love our city, Lord, and we know you love as well. And Father, we just ask your hand of blessing upon our council, our mayor, Lord, the leadership of this city, Lord, your protection upon, Lord, our first responders, our police officers in this, Lord. They need your hand of protection every day. And God, we just ask for that today as well. And Father, there's big decisions to be made tonight and every time that we meet. And but Father, we know we can rely on you during these times because you're a big God and you promised us your wisdom if we asked for it. Tonight, we ask for your great wisdom, Lord, as we move forward and make big decisions, Lord, that you're already aware of, Lord, that we do things that glorify you. Lord, we love you and we love Odessa and thank you so much for the blessing and the honor of serving in this way. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
It's getting ready to be a time in it.
It is. Well, I can't wait. I can't wait.
So we do have some proclamations and presentations and awards to do today. And so at this moment, I'm going to call on Mayor Pro Tem Mata. You have the honor to take care of it.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, I would like to call up my son Wyatt Mata.
Bring up the whole thing.
As most of y'all know, I was involved in an accident about four weeks ago and nearly lost my hand. And thank God that my son was there with me. He was my hero that day. I might get emotional. But I'm just going to read this proclamation. Whereas Wyatt Mata has the son of Mark and Abby Mata, and they're the oldest of three kids. And whereas Wyatt worked for his dad, and on July 20th, 2023, at approximately 9:30 AM, Mark was changing the trailer tire and the fender came down and pinned his right hand to the fender and tire. And whereas upon quick action and no hesitation, Wyatt drove a forklift to the trailer and lifted the trailer for the release end of my hand. And whereas Wyatt drove his dad to the ER and as he was airlifted to San Antonio University Hospital, Wyatt drove to meet his dad at the hospital. And whereas Wyatt's fearless act of bravery and heroism saved his dad's hand. And whereas the city of Odessa recognizes Wyatt's heroic actions and tenacity, and we commend him for his valiant act. Now, therefore, I, Mark Mata, by virtue of the authority vested in Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim August 22nd, 2023, as Wyatt Mata Day throughout the city of Odessa and encourage citizens to honor and recognize his admirable qualities as he reaches for the stars in his successful life ahead. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I got emotional.
This is giving him a get out of jail free for about a week. And after that, it's all gone.
Let's stay down there.
Oh, wow. Okay. So a few months ago, we organized the sports committee, Quality of Life Committee. So me, myself, Councilwoman Swanner and Councilman Steve Thompson have been working together to bring us a sports complex to this community. They're very much needed. And so as part of that, we want to do this public-private partnership. And doing that, we see Councilman Thompson took it upon himself to work and get sponsorships for this endeavor. And we just wanted to recognize Oxy as one of our sponsors that's going to be donating $1 million to this endeavor. So on behalf of the city of Odessa, we thank you very much for your generous donation. We appreciate it.
It's actually behalf of 1.5.
Oxy and 1.5. Yeah. On the behalf of Oxy and... As we flip around the check. On the behalf of Oxy 1.5, we're extremely excited to be given this donation and we're looking forward to the sports complex and everything that it brings to the community.
And we look forward to having you.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry you want to get in media's way. There we go. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Toby. I want to give a shout out to Julie Moore. Of course, I've been talking to her for two years. And of course, Vicki and the rest of the Oxy family. They've been great to work with. This has been going on for two years, so taking a long time, but finally here. Glad to have you. Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Did I understand this is a five-year, $1 million commitment?
Five hundred thousand. I'm not sure about the specifics.
I was kidding with you.
It's broken. I don't know broken. Okay, moving on. Any citizens wishing to comment on any non-agenda items can do so by filling out a speaker card and stating your name for the record. You can do so by coming forward now. Any member of the public... Can everybody hear us in the back? Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. Moving forward, item five, consent agenda. Council, will you review the consent agenda as presented and entertain a motion for any changes or to approve the consent agenda as presented? I have a motion by Councilmember Mata for accepting the consent as presented. You'll have a second. Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, council, I'm going to ask, as we, before we go into the regular and regular agenda, I'm going to ask the council to entertain a motion for suspension of the rules. So move. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. You'll have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Reason why we're suspending the rules is that we're going to have to move some items around. We're going to move item 14 to, in front of item number nine, to consider approval request of oil and gas lease proposals for 3.72 acre aggregate mineral acres of Section 26, Block 42, Township 2, Texas Pacific Railroad County Survey. Reason why? It's a lawyer and he's on the clock and we want to get a minute. So come on forward and we got three minutes and start, clock starts now.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Steve Posick. I'm a partner with the law firm of Brockett, McNeil &amp; Posick in Midland, Texas, and it is my distinct pleasure to be here today. I hope that this is the start of something that will be very good for the city. We have roughly 35 mineral acres, so not surface, but just underneath the ground, that is owned by the city and that some parties have come forward and talked about wanting to lease. Based on that input or after receiving that input, Mr. Dan Jones reached out to me and I have been retained to represent the city of Odessa in pursuing getting that 35 mineral acres leased. If you will look in your packet, we have a very brief slideshow presentation. I'm not going to make everyone suffer through actual PowerPoint, but we've tried to summarize the high points in these slides. Primarily, we have gone on a section-by-section basis. That 35 acres is split up over four different sections that are just north of the old Flint Hills plant, southeast of downtown. We've got four requests for proposal that have been drafted. I've only brought one official copy, but my understanding is that the city council has copies of all four RFPs in their possession. It was kind of a strategic choice to do four RFPs to go section by section. And the rationale is fairly simple. It's to try and maximize the amount of revenue that we generate for the city. We are going to receive responses from different oil and gas operators that I think are going to propose different configurations. Some I think will want to combine various sections, whether it's a... I believe it will all be lateral wells, but I imagine they'll be drilled in what's called stand-up two-milers where they'll pick a location such as just north of the old Flint Hills plant and drill through the two sections north of there. So there will be a surface site, an industrial area, but the wells will actually go underneath, you know, roughly 10,000 to 15,000 foot depth. But that'll all depend on the proposals that we get. This is not the end of the story today. What is going to happen is after the proposals are issued, we will be contacted, I hope, with significant offers for the lease of the city's minerals. And then I will be back in front of you all after working with Mr. Jones and with the purchasing department here in the city with a proposal for which oil and gas lease we should sign. As you always want to do in an offer process, we're going to try and cast a wide net. We've identified several operators that we want to pitch this to, and we'll see what they come back with. In addition to the 35 acres that we've identified so far that various parties have expressed interest in, again, in working with the city attorney's office, we've identified a need for information on the part of the city, which is, do we own any other minerals beneath the city proper? And after doing some digging, I think the answer is distinctly, we don't know yet. So we have done some preliminary research at my firm. I have a team. I've actually brought my land technician Samantha Spencer today. We also have three landmen on staff who help us with these kinds of matters. It's kind of our bread and butter. And based on some preliminary research, we've identified several tracts that range in size from city lots to maybe a few acres that the city may very well own. We are going to come with a proposal for approval to Mr. Jones regarding an additional expenditure of attorney's fees to do title research on those different tracts. And what I wanted to come and tell you tonight is it's a different oil and gas game out here now. I think you all are probably very much aware of that. Bonuses on new leases for unleased mineral acre tracts can range from anywhere between $5,000 per acre and $30,000 per acre. So if we identified maybe just one or two additional acres that the city did not know it owned, it could be a small boon for the city. Again, that's not been approved by the city attorney's office yet. We will bring that proposal to Mr. Jones when it is time, but I think that time will be fairly soon. So that is two projects that my firm is working on. Oil and gas work, especially these days, can get very heady. If any of the city council members have questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Drill, baby, drill. Counsel, any questions?
All right. With that, I would ask that the city council approve the four RFPs that are on the agenda item. Once they are approved, they will be issued by the city and we will get to work.
Counsel, on item 14, before us is a consideration of approval for request of oil and gas leases as proposed in 3.72 acre aggregate mineral acres in Section 26, Block 42. And if you look at it, each one of four are broken down in their respective blocks and sections. Counsel, I have entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Mata. Any discussion? All those in favor indicating by a vote of aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Council members, I thank you for your time. It is my firm's pleasure to serve.
Thank you.
Go get them.
Thank you.
Go find those other minerals.
They're pretty good.
Yeah. We're going to go back to our regular scheduled program. Item nine, to discuss and consider the city of Odessa dissolving the tax increment reinvestment zone, number one, TERS bylaws and board of directors. Do someone, do have someone that wants to be a speak on it? You want to come forward? Mr. Stoker, state your name for the record and only your first and last name. You do have three minutes on the item. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, council, good to be back again. Not completely surprised to be here at this point. You know, I've been a fan of the TERS since you started talking about it in 2018. And I know some have not been a fan since 2018. And it's been a battle to push anything forward ever since. And I know there's been discussion about the effectiveness of the TERS. We certainly didn't have any money the first year. We collected our second year and started working on some projects, including the re... Not surfacing is the wrong word. Relandscaping of the parking lots at Fourth and Grant. We also purchased the flower pots that are down the middle of Grant. That even came up as a point of consternation with the hospital that they didn't get their own flower pot for all the money they've put in. But I've just seen this TERS as an opportunity. You look at other towns like Waco. Chip and Joanne have done a great job, but none of that was their money. That's TERS spending. Look at Uptown Dallas. Look at Frisco, the star, the Cowboys headquarters. That was all TERS funding. We have an opportunity to continue the growth of downtown Odessa. And I know the sentiment I've heard again and again is, well, why don't we just spend this money that way anyway? But this designates, this gives us the money in our own account to do these things. We've been having new members. Ms. Swanner, your appointment, Rachel Miner, came in full of energy and kind of reinvigorated me. And we met with city staff and started collecting ideas, one of them being partnering with Keep Odessa Beautiful to buy trash cans for downtown. Came up in a downtown Odessa meeting and my comment was, that's what the TERS is for. We're supposed to buy these things that help improve our downtown to encourage further investment. The other conversation that's come up in the DOI board is creating grants for signs. There are businesses downtown whose signs haven't worked in decades. TERS money could be spent revitalizing those signs. If it went above the scope of that, ODC has grants for facades and infrastructures that could become available. There was even talk at the ODC meeting of giving the facade and infrastructure grants to the TERS board. It would be a little tricky to fund them, but we could figure something out, hopefully. So I know that, again, there is an opportunity. I know that perhaps there's some room to learn for all of us. I know there's been definite misunderstanding and miseducation about how a TERS works and functions and is funded and how much money we'll raise and not raise. We are bound by the money we bring in every year, which isn't ever going to create far-reaching projects, but it has helped us to at least
Three minutes.
do a little in our downtown area. So I hope you continue to support and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thanks, very. So I requested to place this item on the agenda and without... I'm not going to speak for any other of the entities. But I came under the understanding that I was first elected, I was contacted by the other entities and they basically did express their displeasure of how it came to be as far as the TERS was formed. I'm not privy to any of that information because we were not on the council. So I took it for the historical knowledge that they had, but they were not in support. I know this council, previous council and this council worked very hard to try to work with the TERS. We guided, we made requests not to spend money in a certain way. We were ignored and continued. This has nothing to do with any of those things at all. Whether you feel that we're misinformed, miseducated, that doesn't matter. The situation is this. There are three entities that are participating in the TERS, and it doesn't work when they call me and request, we're done. Five years, this is a rotation. I've been informed by the, one of the major entities that they're not going to continue it, which just leaves two other entities. And just don't see the participation is not going to be there. So I placed it on the council to consider for us to go ahead and step out. And I think what you will end up seeing is you'll see another entity. I basically asked them to... They already had it on their agenda. I asked them to take it off. I proposed and had a meeting and proposed options and projects for downtown that we were willing to support and push the TERS money there that way if they were considered a revamping of the board in itself to not chase all these rabbit holes. In the end, I just basically said, nope, we're done. So in essence, we're just going to be sitting there by ourselves. And so there has been a suggestion to continue in another form. So a partnership, once again, within the taxing entities, but not necessarily within the TERS. So, and having said that, I'm not sure how many monies we have that has been collected because we're the prime... I was looking to see if Seth was... Seth, have any idea how much money we have right now that's in the TERS account? I think we're annually generating about 100, 100K.
There's about... I would say about 100K, that's about right.
On an annual basis?
On an annual basis, but cash-wise, it's, I'm going to say around 300,000 all together for the three entities.
So here's a novel concept. Dissolve the TERS and return the money back to the taxpayer. Equitably, what they contributed goes back to OC, goes back to the hospital and then back to the city. I would suggest that the TERS money that was generated from the city to stay for designs for downtown, you know, redevelopment. And so there's a process that has to be done that way. I believe that it has to go through a resolution.
It does, and that's what the bylaws call for, a termination 6.2.
Okay. And so now...
That is in your agenda packet as well.
Okay. And so my suggestion had been to the entities is for us to continue the TERS with an option that for a notification per quarter, if they had decided to leave, they could do so. And there would be no expansion of the TERS, but in the end, the entities just said, no, we're not doing it. We're not going to consider. We don't want to support it. Right. And so basically then at that time is we said that we would return the money with the money that they put in. Now, that's going to be up to Seth to put together and do so.
Yes, I'll have those figures.
So today, I'm not going to ask the council to make a motion. I'll make the motion solely on this. I've been working with the entities and having to do though. I have notified the college. I did do so in person to the president. Been in communications with the hospital. They did have it on their, on the agenda. They had pulled it off at my request. I did not inform that we were putting this, but I felt that since we're the keeper of the monies that we needed to make the first move. There were a lot of plans to be able to make the TERS work. And so aside from what has gone on is besides the point. The reality is, it's five years out. Entity doesn't want to continue and it is a major entity within the city. That doesn't mean that ends the relationship. The relationship still exists. We are in the works to come back and meet again and go forward with a more aggressive, a bigger vision, a more aggressive vision that would change the city and more equitable and voluntary without committing tax dollars in the TERS. It was just, the vision was just too small. The 6 million that was poured towards the downtown was way too small. We have to think bigger, more boldly. And so I think that we've seen some cooperation. We've seen the county that wants to now participate and we have more participation outside of the TERS. And so that's basically what has been going on. I can't divulge anymore for the reason is because it's all fluid. It's just preliminary planning without anything solidified. But there is agreement to come back and have a second, second and third meeting to be able to start solidifying and hopefully make an announcement here within the next couple of months. But I really believe that there's been a lot of great effort by board members that have served, have served equitably. They put every effort into making it work. Yeah, there has been opinion about, you know, what TERS is and what it was tasked to do. I don't think it was ever clear, clear and concise. So it's going to be up to Seth to redistribute the money back. And I think it's a novel concept to be taxing entities, returning tax dollars back to their taxing entities. And I know the hospital can, they're definitely need to use it. So my motion will be in item nine, is to dissolve the tax increment zone, number one, TERS bylaws and board of directors, and to return the tax dollars back to their respectful taxing entities as quickly as possible if that, at the end of this quarter, but first quarter. And by resolutions, but we'll have to do. Counsel, I will open up for discussion and anything else you want to add on that motion or amend the motion.
Mayor, you've made the motion.
Yes.
Are you going to ask for a second before you go into discussion?
Yes, and I'll ask for a second before discussion. Second. Second by Councilmember Haney. Counsel, I'll open up for discussion.
I do have a question. A lot of what you just mentioned is first-time information for me. Are we going to get something in writing? Because you said you personally visited with the president of the college and I'm assuming with representative of Medical Center Hospital. Are we going to get something in writing that they're... I mean, do they even have to give us anything in writing? That they don't want to be a part of this entity? I mean, this part?
Two ways, two ways this can handle it, to let it dissolve at the end of the year. But each entity, they don't have to inform. They don't have to give us anything in writing. They basically have to just take action within their own entity. The hospital had already had it on their agenda. The schedule, I had contacted them after I had seen it. I requested it for them to hold it off. They did so. Pending a meeting, it took a couple of weeks to get the meeting together. We met and then it was in that meeting towards the end after we discussed several options, several proposals, several plans of all the entities of what they want to do downtown. It's trying to get all the entities on the same page because everybody's doing their own thing. At the end of that and that presentation by several of the entities, the hospital informed me that the schedule that they were done and that they were going to put it right back on their agenda. They didn't inform me when they were going to do that, but I did tell them that I was going to go ahead and put it on this agenda and as good faith that we were going to follow through on our end. And simply, it's just, I'm making a motion. I have a second. It's still up to council vote of if you want to decide whether you want to stay or go ahead and dissolve the TERS.
And for clarification, downtown is in my district. So this doesn't mean, with the dissolving of the TERS, doesn't mean that development downtown is ending by no means, right?
No. And so, you know, and I wish, and I had the permission to the other entities to talk about. So, you know, for years and decades, we've had a discussion about what has to happen with courthouse, you know, the post. has to happen with the, with, with the, with the courthouse, you know, the, the post office there takes a lot of, of real estate. Uh, we have the new park from OC. We have the property that's next to that, you know, that belongs to the county. You have the, the library committee that's doing a lot of work. Uh, they've been given, as far as what I've heard, uh, some green lights from, from the, uh, from the county. Uh, the hospital is also working diligently on a couple of, uh, projects. They've approached us about some of the things that we own downstairs. The thing is, is that what's happened is every entity has worked in their own little side, and the Turks was meant to be able to bring it all together. And, and the master, and two master plans that actually were, uh, brought by the Turks and paid by the Turks was to be able to do that. Somehow it never, it just never congealed. Uh, maybe because their attitudes on some of the entities that they did just didn't want to do it or felt they were left off. I, I, I don't know. But the thing is that it was in this meeting that, that I had asked, and I made a pitch that we were willing to support whatever the entities wanted to do. We wanted a plan around that, but we needed to know what they were doing. They made their presentations, very crude, but you could see the vision where they're going. And so, but the one thing that they were all adamant is county didn't want to participate because they never participated, and, and, and basically the hospital's saying that we're, we're, we're done. And so, if we, if we're missing one, uh, you know, leg of the stool, it, it, it- You know, it's not going to stand up. And so, this is, this is why I said that I would put it on the agenda, have a discussion with the council. I didn't want to have the discussion individually. I wanted to have it as a group. That way, if you have any questions, I'll be, I'll, I'll answer as best as possible. But what I, I, I don't have permission is to divulge what they're, what they're, what, what they're, they're, they're in development, uh, what they want to do in their respective parts of downtown. Uh, I just ask for us to be able to be as best possible on the same page.
But this, it's, is this kind of contingent upon the, this dissolving of the Turks?
No, they're going to go forward. They're going to go forward with their plan. They, they're not holding hostage, but they do, they're, I was, they're giving a definite that they're not going to continue, uh, being a member of the Turks.
Well, you won't, you won't have that, you won't have that revenue coming in if they're out of it.
Well, you know, the hospital has a huge imprint downtown.
Oh, yeah.
But the thing is, who, the biggest landowner downtown isn't the city, isn't the hospital, it's the county, and they do not participate in the Turks.
Right.
And so the thing is, we need the county to be a partner in this because we need to know what they're doing so we can plan around that. We cannot, we cannot revitalize or develop downtown when we're all doing it in our own side. It just doesn't work. And because there is no continuity, there's, uh, the partnership doesn't exist. Everyone's committed, very excited. They feel that this is the right time. We have the right, uh, councils. We have the right commissioners corps. We have the hospital board. Everybody's, everybody feels that everything's aligned to be able to create this new, uh, uh, partnership. And the, the one thing that they're adamant is that they didn't want to do it within the Turks. They said they was limited, it was too small, and it wasn't, uh, uh, big enough, uh, a net. Uh, and so, um, you know, I, I wasn't going to get into debating the semantics. I just wanted to know, I, I, I asked for a delay. They granted to me. We made a pitch, made a proposal, and they appreciated it, they liked it, but in the end, they said, we respectfully, we're going to, we're going to take ourselves out. And so, in supporting that, that's why, once again, we ha- we're here today for having that discussion. And so, um, and then it was, uh, a gesture, I think it would be noble for us to return that money back to the respective, uh, entities. You know, you, you rarely ever see something like this where taxpayer money is actually given back to the, to the taxpayer, and I know the hospital can actually use it. So, um, any further discussion and questions?
Was it, was it equal amounts?
I don't know. That I don't know. I, I would think that they're, they're, you know, you probably have, it's going to be different because of rates. I know the hospital has fifteen cent per one hundred dollar evaluation, but also-
They're different allocations.
They're different allocations, yeah. And that's why instead it's going to have-
So, so you're going to have to figure out a mathematical formula that gives them back the percentage that they would have put in and not an equal amount for the three entities that are participating. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not even.
It won't be either. It'll be, they're, they're, they're-
Their taxing rate.
Pro rata. Yeah, they're pro rata, yeah.
And what I appreciated was councilman Mata's concern about, does this mean if Turks goes away and it was a board that was supposed to be reinvesting to beautify, revitalize, whatever the key word is, um, and now that we don't have this, um, that we continue doing something to make downtown attractive to, to people?
And we're, and we're not dissolving downtown Odessa. That's still, that's still, that's still going and-
Well, you got, let, let, let me, let me, let me answer that question. So the thing is, is that investment revitalization to downtown was occurring before there was ever a Turks board.
Okay.
Okay. Main Street Odessa was created before there was a Turks board. Uh, you know, the beautification, whether you agree with the trees or not, the right type of trees, and, and, and then we wind up having the SMN blocks. We wind up having the, the sidewalk. All that done, was done without the Turks. You know, how the, how the Turks happened, you know, I, I can't verify, uh, the, there were members of the entities that, that basically sat me down and said, this is how it came to be. I can't, I can't deny, I don't know whether that, that's how it happened. Did it happen on a golf course? It happened between two people? I have no idea. But the thing is, is that, you know, i- if, if the Turks continues to exist or not exist, whether our participation either continues or ceases as after today, I think there's, there's interest throughout this community. I think we're all excited about what's happening in downtown. We s- we have a lot of projects. There's still six million dollars committed down to downtown. We had, we, we, we went to the, the extent to legalize that when it was not done properly. So, I think we've demonstrated a, enough interest that we want to continue the downtown. I've always been sad that, and I know I get hit with this, is that when I came in, it's basically, oh, the mayor hates downtown. He goes, look, guys. I, and I hate doing this, but the thing is, is that we used to have Main Street downtown, and that was not generating a lot. It wasn't inclusive, the community. It was myself, Mitch Fields, and Lori Gray in Main Street. We, we came up with the firecracker Fandango. CVA is the one, we took Fandango from Lobbuck, and they came up with the firecracker, and they're the ones that came up with, with, with the labeling. So we continued to commit to downtown. And so the thing is, is that there's different ideas, you know. I think there was accusations that we wanted to turn it into, was it Fifth Street, Sixth Street, whatever it is, it's in Austin, which we don't. We want to control, we want quality and, and things of that nature. But the thing is, is that I think that we have to fix our ordinances, we have to assist, we have to have continuity, we have to have all the entities on board, especially the biggest landowner, which is the county, and they're not participating, and they have no interest to participate in the Turks. They have a big footprint. They, uh, and so they, they, they want to work with that, and they're also, because I, I actually asked and requested if the county would consider putting it on their agenda to join the Turks, and it was a resounding no. And so, um, I, I, in, in, in my opinion, I just think it's, it's, it's too small. Uh, the money is gen- generated, it's about a hundred K. We're not growing it. Um, we have to be very careful of how we develop it, you know, it, 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 we need rooftops downtown. We haven't been able to get that going. Uh, I think that, uh, we have, uh, initially a plan to be able to start addressing all those issues. We've had some purchases. Uh, and, uh, I'm not saying that the, the plan right now that's being proposed is a perfect, it's work, it's, it's, it's a working, but at least we have the county now at the table that's wanting to work with us.
That's me.
Uh, but they're not, county doesn't want to, want to work within the Turks and the hospital once out, that which winds up leaving us just us and OC, and this doesn't work. Uh, you know, I still can't stand on two legs, and so, um, let me, uh, we took staff, our planning and zoning and, uh, urban development, and we made a lot of proposals. There was a lot of excitement, and, uh, they want to move forward. They just want to move out forward from outside of, of restrictive boundaries of the Turks. This basically was the sense of the, of that meeting. So this isn't just me going around saying that I had a, a personal agenda or whatever it is that, that, that's being said out there, that, you know, it, I requested to hold off, find, trying to find a way to work it out, and in the end, um, nobody wants to be part of it, and they're, they're basically done. They've given it the time that they've given it, and they respectfully just request that they're going to, they're going to opt out.
Okay.
So, I, I tried my best, you know. I know some people are going to question that I didn't, but, uh, uh, you know, I did try to work within the, uh, try, I did talk to the entities about it, so that's where we're at. Do you have any other questions?
Hi, just a comment. Um, for Craig Stoker, I wanted to acknowledge you, um, and your work with the Turks, with DOI, with Melzone Wells, for everything you do for this city, for the, I think, remaining eight board members. Appreciation to them for trying and pushing it. And, thank you.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor of, um, of the zone, the tax increment, reinvestment zone, number one, Turks, bylaws, and board of directors, indicate by the motion, by the vote of aye?
Aye.
Aye. Raise hands. In favor. All those against?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion passes five to two. We're going to move on to item ten. Consider approving management agreement of P Three Works LLC for management of public improvement district Pid that will be located at Windmill Crossing. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, as you know, um, this is Mary Petty's group, and she has met y'all on a couple of occasions, P Three Works, and she is actually, her company actually manages these public improvement districts, these Pids, and Odessa is going to have the first Pid at Windmill Crossing with Beaton Bay. Um, so I just need a simple motion to get this approved, to enter into this management agreement with her.
All right, that's going to be District Four. Councilman O'Connell, any discussion, any comment?
I'm all for it, yeah.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Get me a, a some move.
I have a motion by councilman O'Connell, second by councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to item eleven. Consider approving the creation of the Amy Bell Sports Foundation. Approving the Articles of Incorporation and appointing three councilmembers to, uh, to incorporate the Amy Bell Sports Foundation and act as ex-official members of the board of directors. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, this is, of course, a very exciting, uh, Amy Bell Sports Foundation. Uh, the three members that, of course, y'all are the ultimate deciders, but I was going to recommend councilwoman Swanner, councilman Mata, and councilman Thompson to be the ex-officio members on there. Uh, they will also be entering and as the Articles of Incorporation, they're going to sign it in just like two or three seconds from now because we're ready to get this filed tomorrow morning.
There we go.
So, we're ready to roll.
Okay.
Just need a motion.
All right.
I saw a move.
A motion by councilmember Luskas, I have a second.
Second.
Second by councilmember Thompson. All in favor indicating by saying nay.
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Sign away. Are we going to do the signatures now?
I'd, I'd love to do the signatures now.
Go for it.
Because we, we-
Let's have a moment. How many pins do we have? Just-
We literally are like on gas. I mean, we're like on the pedal here.
I just want to see me struggle with my left hand.
Yeah, that's what we want to see. That's what we want to see.
Let me sign it for you.
It'd be better.
So we, pass it, pass it down. There we go. So we're going to, these are the Articles of Incorporation, and Norma, here is a notary, so, there we go, councilwoman.
Yeah, right there.
Just one time.
Any more tab?
And they should notarize it, sorry.
I hear, I hear wrappers.
And just, if I could, if I may, take, take a moment, Mayor. This, this whole Dan Crickney, if I'm wrong, the reason we're doing it this way, this way it meets Mr. Bell and Mrs. Bell's, uh-
It meets that escrow agreement.
Yeah, it's part of the agreement in the fact that no other future council can-
Yeah, undo it.
Undo it. It's in perpetuity, so, that money's going to be there, and that foundation will be there.
Can't move around.
Can't move, move it around.
Yeah, just underneath. Yes, sir, underneath. And this is the notary.
I just want to publicly say thank you, councilwoman Swanner, councilman Mata, and councilman Thompson. You have made happen something that's long overdue in this community. So thank you very much, people.
Thank you, councilman. It's, it's been a group effort, definitely.
Yep. Do I have the initials?
Sign.
Oh, no, no, just, just, just need to sign the notary book.
Okay, you're not kidding me. Oh, I keep thinking you're stealing. You got that left hand going.
All right, here we go. All right, there we go, Norma. And then we're going to give this to Nira, and then we're going to, we should get it all, we get it all. Exciting times.
Yeah, it is.
And of course, we will, the city will, once everything's done with the escrow agreement, once we do our part, uh, the, the land will be, will be given to the city. The city will then turn around and give the ninety-four plus acres to the, to the Amy Bell Sports Foundation, and then the Parks Foundation will receive the five acres that will be Amy Bell Park.
Memorial Park.
So, these are good times.
All right. Yep. Okay, so, we're good?
Yeah, just, yeah, we've already done the, we did the motion, did the second, yeah, did the vote, okay, perfect, yeah.
Is city secretary there to confirm?
We're good.
We're going to move on to item twelve. Consider amending the resolution of twenty twenty-three R forty-nine to authorize the city manager, Beckmeyer, to execute the escrow agreement for the donation of the ninety-four point one five three acre tract. Mr. Jones.
And Mayor, this goes back, uh, just what we were just discuss, just discussing, uh, this is actually, uh, going to allow Mr. Beckmeyer to execute the, uh, escrow agreement when the time comes. I wanted to go and have it out of the way. We may be a month or two away, but I wanted to go and get it out of the way.
Okay. Council, any discussion? Entertain a motion and a second for approval. I have a motion by councilmember Haney.
Second.
Second by councilmember Swanner. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item thirteen. Consider adopting new rate review mechanism with Atmos Energy.
Mayor, council. So what we have in front of you is a consideration to adopt a new rate for the West Texas region, which includes us. On or about March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three Atmos Energy filed a new rate review mechanism. Uh, with the system served with the cities, about seventy cities that we are in this area, with the Texas Railroad Commission. Um, the committee, the seventy, uh, city committee, uh, went and deliberated with the, the commission, and at first, the original proposal was twelve point one million increase for the West Texas region. We have, um, settled for eight point four million for the West Texas region, which includes Odessa, um, with two point seven million for the secu- secur- secur-
Secretization.
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 Easy to hear say.
Regulatory asset expenses needed for the winter storm, Yuri. Uh, this, all of this means to the average residential bill is about five dollars and four cents per month increase. And that is for your consideration and your approval.
Council, any discussion?
That's gas rates will go up five dollars and four cents.
On average, yes, sir. Our attorneys did, did a good job.
Everybody's going to start going to electric. No competition, no adversaries here.
Council, we have any discussion?
All right.
All right, entertain a motion for, uh, approval.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. A decrease in the increase.
Yeah.
Another five dollars. Uh, already, we did fourteen. We're gonna move on to the fun stuff. Item fifteen, consider authorizing the pre-development agreement with Rad Sports LLC, partner of Synergy Sports, Charlotte LLC for serving testing environmental, uh, Mr. Bridger. You got the floor, sir. How you doing, Jason?
Good to see you guys.
Good to see you.
Nice to be back. Um, I don't know if you wanna put the presentation up here.
Presentation.
You have, you have.
Do you have the?
I sent it to, to Norma and she said it would be included.
It was the one that was.
It was the one, it was the one that.
Packet, it's in your packet.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, it's in here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so nobody gets to see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in there.
That was the big ta-da.
That was the ta-da. Well, he took your thunder away, Jason.
This has been a nice team sports meeting.
Yesterday or something or the.
I like that logo.
Yeah.
I feel it on the screen, yeah.
Well, we can just, you can just email it and, can we email it to a, to an email address and pull it up on, on that computer? He can pull it up.
Where's our IT guy?
IT is in here. Landon. He's talking.
There he comes, he's coming.
There he is.
All you gotta do is say Landon. So, uh, I guess you're gonna email it. Can you put it on?
You're gonna email it to you?
No, they're not me. I don't have access to that.
Projected.
Oh, you wanna? Yeah, they wanna project it on that.
Yeah, just tell me an email address.
Yeah, let everybody know what your email address is. All complaints will now go to Landon. All code enforcement complaints will now go to Landon.
All right. You should have it. All right, so we can run through this and then, uh, we'll save some, some video time, but it's good to see you guys again. Um, it, it is in your packet, uh, the, the slide deck. But it was really just an, an update on kinda what we've been doing for the past four months. Um, Councilman Mata, Mr. Thompson, Swanner and I have been doing a lot of work. Uh, Dan's been involved, um, as well as our private partners. And so our charge coming out of our feasibility study was, uh, what you guys gave us to do was to kinda fine tune this. And so what we've done for the past four months is really get into architecture, design, engineering. We worked with Mr. Bell on that escrow agreement. Uh, we worked together to create the sponsorship tiers. Uh, and so, you know, where we've gotten to is a place where, um, we know what the facility is gonna hold. Uh, we, the financial model still supports it, uh, and we've been able to secure the private funding for it. Um, and so we will be able to fund up to a hundred and seven percent of the total project cost. So the city is in a position where they can choose to participate with capital, but they don't have to. Hundred and seven percent is used because a hundred percent of the construction cost plus seven percent of soft costs. So, all right, so engineering, architecture, legal, those sorts of things. Um, so we worked with Mr. Bell to finalize the escrow agreement, the hundred acres. Uh, Fodry Road will be relocated, uh, and then we'll be working with O D C to, uh, on some economic development incentives. As we further studied the market, um, we determined the, the best mix of assets, and that was an indoor facility. Uh, the feasibility study said between six and twelve courts, and so the, the magic number seems to be ten, um, along with a complement of outdoor fields, twelve baseball fields and ten soccer fields. Uh, we situated all of those assets on the site, um, and it looks really nice. So I'll show it to, to you guys in a second. Uh. So here's where we are. Uh, so right now, we're, we're currently finalizing some options for the exterior of, of the indoor facility, and we'll present those, um, to council when we've got them, uh, along with some pros and cons. Um, you know, there's different looks that people want and like. There's different costs that come with different looks. And so we'll, we'll lay those out and how it affects the overall budget. Um, we helped create the sponsorship tiers and the naming right options, the sports foundation, right? This very appropriate was, uh, created. Uh, and then several of the council members have had, um, some very significant conversations with, um, major corporations, uh, local companies as well as individuals who've pledged their support, uh, in terms of capital. Um, we're not gonna name those right now because it's not finalized and, you know, we want that to be a special time. But there are a, a, a number of companies and individuals that are, are very interested in this project. Um, the preliminary cost estimate still holds true. We had a, an official cost estimate done by an estimating firm. Um, with the total number of assets, we're still at seventy million dollars, which is what we had projected before. Uh, and we're having conversations with, um, several architecture and engineering firms, uh, including, uh, Mr. Bell's engineering, the firm that Mr. Bell uses, um, to help us during pre-development with the engineering work and the, and the advanced architecture that'll be done. Uh, we've got the private funding secured for the city. Uh, and then we've, I've talked with Dan several times and sent him over the draft of the pre-development agreement, uh, which will be the next step in this process. So this is a, a two-dimensional site plan of what the sports complex campus will look like. Um, you may notice that some of the soccer fields do run into the ponds, which is fine. Uh, you can see the twelve fields as well as the indoor complex. Uh, Amy Park is, is down in the middle. Um, some of the minor details aren't shown at this level. Uh, there will be, ideally, there will be some satellite parking to the north between the, the three fields. Uh, and you're not gonna see things like, um, you know, necessarily lights around the soccer fields or benches and, and things like that. Uh, and then we put together a, a more of a three-dimensional overlay, um, looking into the rest of the development, uh, what this is really starting to look like. Uh, and so a hundred acres is a lot of land, but it's also not a lot of land. Uh, there's not very many other configurations that work. This takes up a lot of space. This is a massive facility. The indoor complex is right now around a hundred and forty thousand square feet. Um, it will be about sixty-five feet tall. Um, and then you've got the, you can see in this version, the lights and things around the fields and, and whatnot.
And Jason, do you wanna tell them about how it's basically a big, we're gonna put like a veneer on it, like stone and all that, but tell them about the space that.
Sure.
You have to use the warehouse type.
Right, yep. So if you remember back in the, it's a feasibility study, we looked at the inside, what the, the layout would be with courts and things like that. Um, Councilmember Mata and Swanner and, and Max all went down to Gainesville, Florida, which was another project that we were part of and, and toured that. And it was a very similar, uh, type of structure, type of building. They may have some color that they wanna add to this. But, um, the most efficient way to build these big of a structure is with pre-engineered steel. Um, you have to clear span upwards of three hundred feet, and you can't do that traditionally.
Yeah.
Nobody wants a pole in the middle of a basketball court.
You gotta have that open space.
Open space.
And that's the only way to be able.
Correct. Um, NCAA requirements for volleyball require a thirty-foot, twenty-eight-foot clear height to the ceiling. Uh, indoor track and field requires forty feet. Right? So your ceiling will be roughly forty feet to the beams, you know, upwards of fifty, fifty-five feet when all is said and done. Now, as you enter the sports complex, um, and through this access road or driveway, um, the entire facade of the, of the facility can be, um, made to look like whatever we want. It can look like metal and there can be glass, it can be stucco, you can put brick on there, you can put river rock, you can put anything you want on the outside of a metal building. Um, so what, what it does is it gives you the efficiency of construction, but the presentation of a lot more expensive looking, um, building, right? And so it can look very upscale and still stay as a pre-engineered metal building, right? Even when you get inside, right, the only thing that would really give it away is if you look up and you look at the ceiling joists, right? They're gonna be exposed, be, you know, exposed steel trusses. But the, all of the interior walls, you know, are finished, offices are, you know, can be made as nice as, as in here. So, you know, again, trying to do this any other way, either through stick built or pre-cast concrete, you're gonna double the cost or, or more. Um, so that's the most efficient way to build. Um, there will be a lobby, uh, that kind of protrudes from the, the metal building, and that will be stick built, right? It'll be smaller, it'll be more of an entryway. Uh, and again, you've got a lot of flexibility on that with glass and steel and iron and, and, you know, whatever we wanna do. Um, and so that kinda gets us to next steps. Uh, and this kind of aligns with, um, Mr. Bell's escrow agreement. And what pre-development is, is taking our concepts and turning them into construction-ready plans. And so to do that, there's architecture, there's engineering, mechanical, electrical, environmental, um, more detailed budget work, uh, financial pro formas to put together, uh, and then putting together a construction schedule, right? And so by the end of the pre-development period, uh, we will be ready to submit plans for permitting. Um, that's, that's the point, we'll, we'll be at the edge of the cliff at that point. Um, and so this pre-development period gets us to the point where we're ready to begin construction, have a ribbon cutting, have a groundbreaking. Um, and so those bullet pointed items are the things that include, are, are what's included in pre-development. And then, as I mentioned, um, there is funding for, um, for, over the, the entire cost of the project. Um, the private side partners that are funding this are very excited about West Texas. Um, they can't, uh, they can't get here fast enough. And so it was just identifying the right opportunity. And when I brought this to, to our partners, they, they jumped at it. They didn't, they didn't question it. Um, and so pre-development will take about three months. Um, this is the only phase and the only dollar commitment that is typically put onto the municipality, uh, because it's, it has to do with your land, right? It has to do with the land that the city owns. So the engineering, the architecture. Uh, and then as far as the timeline, uh, you know, the, the pre-development will be done around the end of the year. Uh, and so at that point is, is time for the groundbreaking. Construction will take between twelve and eighteen months. It can be phased. Uh, for instance, the fields will be done or can be done much sooner than the indoor facility. And so those can come online six months into construction. It starts to generate traffic, it starts to generate a buzz, and then as the indoor facility's built, um, the brand is already out there, uh, people are used to coming, and it just becomes one more thing that, that can be added. Uh, and so what, we're, the point that we're at now is, is similar to, to what we just, what Dan just did, is we've got some, some i's to dot and t's to cross on the pre-development agreement, but for council to authorize city manager, um, the authority to execute that, uh, once Dan and I finish redlining it and, and, and putting all the ducks in their rows.
I'm, we're ready for pretty much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Council, do we have any discussion? Any comments in the committee?
I think that's amazingly swift. I'm amazed, I'm just amazed.
That's our intention.
I, I, I remember the first council meeting.
Yeah, it wasn't.
She said, I don't want this to take another.
Yeah.
Year.
It's, it's been, it's been a lot of work, a lot, a lot of meetings, but it's well worth it. And the community really needs this and they're very excited about this. So, uh, we decided that we were able to partner with you, Jason, and Synergy Sports Global and Rad. I think it's gonna be a great fit for the city. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Will the, will the baseball quadrants have, um, cover for the bleacher area?
Yeah, uh, bleacher area and through, I don't know if I can show it on here, and through the, the walkways that divide the fields.
Oh, the walkways as well.
Um, that's near and dear to my heart. My daughter plays softball, so we go to way too many of these.
Also, yeah, also Jason, where the, where the bullpen, oh, yeah, we'll have those in there.
Yeah, bullpens, batting cages.
Cages and all that.
Those sorts of.
This is like a.
Right.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand foot view.
Yeah.
Because I was asking, what about this? Uh, also another concern was, uh, people asking about, uh, the playgrounds, um, not to be close to the parking spots. They wanted them where, you know, the, so he addressed some of that, those issues to.
Mr. Thompson, you think you might sell a sponsorship for the, for the rooftop of the indoor facility so that when our aerial people fly by, they could see something else?
The only thing, the only commitment I got in that regard was from, was from Julie Moore. She wanted an indoor pool with oxy on the floor, on the bottom of the swim pool. So that, that didn't work, did it? I don't know about the ceiling.
It's face, face too.
And what y'all will notice is will, will be, or what will end up coming from this is, as this moves forward and especially at groundbreaking, um, there will be a big influx of interest in sponsorships.
Yeah.
Right? Somebody needed to be first. And now that somebody's first.
Yes.
Um, it becomes a snowball rolling down a hill.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, we got, we only have one other problem is this road right here. We got this one road right here that's, right now called Fodry Road going up and around and.
But now we took care of that here a couple weeks ago.
No, no. One of the meetings that Ms. Swanner and I had this last week, they wanna rename that road.
Oh, yeah.
You'll love this. They wanna make Chevron Way.
Chevron Way.
Give us the money.
We just told them.
If they wanna pay for the road, they can name it whatever they want. To get the checkbook out.
Yeah, they, they were very supportive. That was a.
Real quick, uh, let me ask a question real quick. Uh, surface, uh, are we still talking turf?
All turf.
Yep.
Grass in the outfield, right?
I thought we were talking turf the whole thing.
Probably all turf makes more sense, only because of the, the climate.
Okay. That both, the, 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 the ball fields and the multi.
And the, and the rectangle field, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, because, I don't know, it's pay me now or pay me later.
Yeah.
And so you lose playability, especially here, where you don't have rain for so long. And then if it does, or when it does, you're out for a week.
Yeah.
Right? If somebody plays on that, you're out for two weeks. Because then not only do you have to let it dry out.
Tear it up.
It'll tear it up, right? And especially with a lot of the flat fields being in, I mean, what they're calling a flood plain. But, you know, if those do get wet, it'll take them a little, little bit longer. With turf.
Yeah, it's no, it's gonna take a big rain though. Was that north of that, because I've been out there a lot, north of that, where you have those fields, there's a huge retention pond back up there, so that's gonna catch most of the.
Right, sure. Yeah, that's what Larry and I talked about.
Yeah, because Larry and I, Larry and I haven't looked at it, so, anyway.
If, if we had a full capacity of our parking lots, uh, vehicles, about how many vehicles?
A little over a thousand.
Wow.
Um, with the main lot and then, um, there'll be three satellite lots. Um, ultimately, with the development of the rest of the development, ideally, you would have some shared parking across Fodry, where you would have overflow, um, you know, if, if need be, there'd be a, a movie theater or something that families can park there and walk across the street.
And will each quadrant of baseball fields, softball fields have a concession stand?
Each will have a, a, a building in the middle of the quad that will be restrooms, concession stand, um, press box, and, uh, it's more of a tower.
Yes, sir.
So the top of the tower is for viewing and, and calling games. Um, that's also where college scouts can go. Um, NCAA rules say that you can't, um, you can't mingle college coaches with parents or players.
Right.
So it gives them a place to be that they can see all four fields. Um, and now you can have college showcases and, and that sort of thing.
And Jason, I'm glad you brought that up. That's the one thing I did wanted to point out is the reason we went so large with this is because we wanted to be able to attract the, not just the regional tournaments, but, and statewide, we wanna do nation, uh, nationwide tournaments. We wanna be able to bring the college tournaments in here. That way we can have, uh, scouts come out here and, you know, going with the smaller concept would have been a lot less expensive, but in the long run, this is gonna make us more money. It's gonna be more, more revenue because we're gonna, we're gonna attract more out of town guests, out of, out of state, we're staying in the hotels, more spend throughout the local economy, heads and beds. throughout the local economy, heads and beds, so, um, you know, that's one of the reasons we went, we went so large with this.
Yep, no, it, it's, I mean, it's a perfect reason.
And so, and so those fences are, to your point, Mark, are three hundred and thirty feet to meet the college guidelines, correct?
Yeah, you can always bring temporary fences in for the little kids.
Yeah.
My daughter doesn't care if there's a temporary fence for two hundred feet.
Yeah.
Um, but you can't go the other way, you can't build a two hundred-foot field.
You can make them smaller, you can't make them bigger.
Right.
All right. So, hopefully we'll have a bunch more donations to, to announce in the, in the next little bit, but there's- we have a great deal of interest and people that have stepped up, if, we really appreciate, and so we're just waiting on numbers from a lot of people.
Good.
We're, we're, we're right in the budget cycle with all the services and oil companies, so that part's working out good.
Good.
On the other part, for the, uh, the, the monetary commitment from the municipality, um, you know, one thing that we, we've discussed is, um, been, keeping an eye on the budget for the water treatment plant. And so there is an ordinance to dedicate one percent, uh, any type of municipal construction to, to the art. And one of the things, this is in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars. And this council discussed that we were not gonna do that. Uh, there's no way we could justify that to the community to put any type of art project at a water treatment plant, there was a lot of projects, uh, proposed, I think one of them was a wedding venue, and I was like-
At a water treatment?
At a water treatment-
Can elaborate?
Yeah, I, I mean, let me tell you, what bride is gonna wanna get married at a water treatment plant? If you agree, you, you're marrying the wrong guy. And so, uh, just keeping that on budget, money is there, and so, uh, I don't know, we need to take action at one point to redirect that money to the, to, to-
We will need to do that, in fact, you may wanna look at changing the ordinance.
Well, that's gonna be the second part, is that I think that we as a council need to really address that, because the thing is, is that we're gonna go into a lot of capital, capital, uh, 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 construction. Um, and so the thing is, is that I, I think everybody here wants to support, uh, art.
Mayor, let's don't lose-
But I understand, and so-
I, I still need a vote on this one.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, and so, but the thing is, is that, you know, I, I wanna be able to put it on, 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 on record, is that I think that, that's where the commitment, and that's where the money, uh, potentially could come and should come, and it's from that. It's already been put forward, and so it's just a redirection, and it, and it's in there and, and in the camp, and what I gotta do is just move it. Any other discussion on the sports complex?
Anything else you wanna add, anything you, you wanna talk on the agreement?
Other than agreement, it's fine, we're just gonna add, uh, Mr. Beckmeyer's name, and then we're gonna type it in, city manager, and then we'll get this done.
Perfect.
Okay.
Rock and roll.
Now's the get, now's the time to get your bench in there, anybody pull out the checkbook?
Scoreboards.
As long as somewhere-
Bricks, yeah, we'll sell bricks.
As long as somewhere we can have a B, well, we're good.
It's really like NASCAR, I want sponsorships everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah.
And Mayor, Jason, he's joking about selling bricks, but there's also something that we discussed, that you could come and say, for two hundred fifty dollars, get your name on it in memory of-
We already, the city already owns a bunch of bricks. I know, that downtown project, I know the guy where, where all the bricks for downtown are sitting, those are ours, you know, and so-
You just have to get them engraved.
Yeah.
But in all seriousness, no, that is a, that's a great way for the community-
Yeah.
To be involved.
To be involved in this.
We just don't need to go out and build in more bricks, and so-
I know at Ole Miss, that's what we did, so, it's, it's something that, that we discussed.
What was that in school again? What was it?
Ole Miss.
Texas Tech.
That's it.
You ever heard, anybody ever heard of Ole Miss?
Yeah, I sure have.
I'm sorry, is that in Mississippi or is that in Louisiana?
We better sign. We could be, we could be here on all day, so- Council, do we have any more discussion on item fifteen? If there is no more discussion, I'll consider author, uh, uh, a vote for approval authorizing the pre-development agreement with Rad Sports, uh, LLC and partner Synergy Sports Charlotte LLC.
So moved.
Having a motion by council member, not to second by Councilman Swanner, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicating by saying nay, motion passed unanimously, Jason, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jason.
We're gonna move on to miscellaneous, um, the discussion, consideration, termination, and our procuring insurance brokerage servicing agreements with City of Odessa. Ms. Ortiz?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here, uh, we are requesting, uh, approval to, um, consider terminating the current agreement we have with the broker of record-
Thank you.
Uh, for procuring our, our insurance, and possibly considering, uh, procuring, uh, a broker, uh, and I'd like to open it up for discussion. Last time I came in, I know that was something that we were gonna be looking forward, next time RFPs came up for renewals, so it's time to do that, so.
Okay, Ms. Ortiz, I, I do have some, some questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, and is your staff here, or is it just you?
Uh, just me.
Okay, I requested for staff to be here. I s- I specifically asked for staff to be here, because I had questions with the staff, but it's okay. So I'm, I'm gonna try to recap real quick, 'cause I gotta put this in, when we talk insurance, you, you, uh, you know, I, I'm, we get into specifics, I, we just get glassy-eyed.
Correct.
So, sometime, uh, uh, help me remind me, when, uh, we were in the three-year for, on all the insurance that we do, and that process, what, what, what- I remember we, I think it was last year that we spoke about it, and we, and, and, and I, I remember talking about that we, uh, we wanted to address of being able to send out, uh, for RFP to be able to see what we could get, and so, um, I asked, you know, when did that process start, and I think you said something about July, right?
Uh, sometime on July or August.
Okay.
It's when we do, uh, this is about the right time, and it gives us plenty of time, 'cause it's still, this, uh, policies don't expire till the end of the year.
Yeah.
So the process can take, uh, four to six weeks, you know, it's, it's not a, a very long, uh, drawn-out process, once you put out the RFP.
Okay, so, a- and, and I'm not trying to be insensitive here.
No, no.
But I'm gonna have to bring up, you know, some people are no longer with us, and it's not, and in no way, it's trying to be disparaging, but, um, the former director of risk management, um, at what time did he stop being the authorized signer?
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Uh, I don't, I don't think he ever was, I mean-
As risk manager, he was never the authorized signer for, uh, you know, to enter any, enter any agreements or the policies and execute them, to request anything from, uh, from Standard or any of those that are carrying our insurance, he was never the authorized signer at any point?
I, I don't, I don't know, Mayor, I, I just know that, you know, once, um, I became the benefits manager, or, you know, to, we took over, uh, he did an agreement for a broker of record, and then after that, it was kinda like the renewals, uh, were coming, you know, he said, "We've got a broker of record, uh, he's gonna do all the purchase for our insurance, and, you know, see, handle it, uh, make sure we provide him what he's asking, and then he'll send the recommendation, and then, you know, let me know."
Well, can you ke- tell me what a, a authorized signer is, and what did they do, what, what, what is it specifically?
I would say he's authorized to enter an agreement for, uh, policies into policies or any other contracts, yes, sir.
So if I'm an employee, and I wanna talk on my benefits, okay, who in your staff are the only ones authorized to do that?
To talk about your benefits?
Yes.
Uh-
And then, then in turn, who is authorized within risk management to be able to talk to those that are providing the, uh, the, the policies and, and all the, you know- From everything that, that the city, the city, uh, provides, you know, from health to, you know, to the pension plans, to life, uh, everything that we have.
So in risk, we don't handle the pension, uh, other than that, we do handle the other benefits, and, like I said, it was for the life insurance, the health benefits, um-
I'm, I'm talking about all of it.
All of it, so, uh, Mr. Darryl Wells would've been the-
Okay.
The head of the department, 'cause we have, other than benefits, we have other, other divisions, yes, sir.
Ms. Ortiz, when did you become the authorized signer, along with Roxanne Wimbley?
I wouldn't say there was any process, like I said, I was just directed, uh, once we had a broker of record, I was just directed to, you know, handle the paperwork, the back and forth, once it went to cancel.
But you, Ms. Wimbley, aren't the authorized, uh, signature, correct?
Uh, we are-
You are the authorized signature of record?
I, I, I would be now, since I'm the risk manager, but back then, uh, other than at Mr. Wells' direction to, to sign the, the agreement once council approved it, uh, you know, for us to handle the paperwork.
Okay, um, so, so when we wind up discussing going into twenty-one, twenty-two, we, we wind up talking a lot of benefits. And, uh, so I get, I guess, I, I, I know that I made a, a, a direct, uh, request that we had not been able to shop a lot of these, um, products out for many, many years.
That is correct.
And so I think it was in that public meeting that, I, I know I, I said, "I think we need to do this," talking about July, things of that nature. And so, um, I, 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 I just don't know how to be able, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fumbling here, because I'm trying to be as sensitive as possible, I just don't think there's any way around it. Um, so, I try, I, I started try- trying to learn as much as I could about insurance, and, uh, I, I, I don't think that, I'm more informed now than, than, than when I started this process, 'cause it's very confusing, it, it, you know, if you're not in the industry, it, it-
Yes, sir.
It's, it's a, it's a big learning curve.
It really is.
But I've tried, I've, I've, I've done my due diligence, I've tried, and, and, and I've come to this conclusion of what exists today, to the best of my abilities, and, 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 I, I don't know, it's 'cause I need to explain it to the council, but, but, but I guess I'm, 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 I put this on, item on the agenda. And, uh, the best way I summed it up is, we're a football town, and the City of Odessa is the, uh, the football team. And, you know, we have a revolving ownership, and at this point, trying to assess what is going on with all the products, the insurances the city has, and trying to understand it. And basically, I remember the request, uh, uh, the overall theme was, is the City of Odessa getting the best bang for the buck? I don't know, uh, wanted to explore that possibility.
Yes.
Uh, are we getting the best bang, bang for the buck for, uh, all the employees? Everybody wants more benefits at a lower cost, of course we do. And so, were we limited in not knowing what we know, because we haven't shopped it around? And so basically is, if what we have now is the best, then it's great. Uh, I, I, I don't feel comfortable with having, um, an exclusivity for a broker of record. Now, in my research to do that, I didn't know what a, a broker of record was, and, and, and in doing so, um, there was an email sent, making accusations of what I had done. And so in essence, I'm not even gonna read it, but basically, in essence, um, I think you were informed that I was trying to remove a bro- a, a broker of record, that, uh, Standard was, was, was contacting, and that I was the one that was trying to remove a Standard record, and you were being advised that, it was giving you a heads-up, that that was I was trying to do, and that the mayor didn't have any authorization. I didn't know what a broker of record is, I did, uh, didn't know it existed, I didn't know that, uh, that, uh, STA Benefits, STA Benefit Limited, uh, which is, uh, parent company is NFP, any sister, any affiliates, didn't even know that. Uh, I was just trying to make an assessment to basically is, what, do the, what benefits, what are the employees, all, were eight hundred, what do they have? That was it. Uh, basically, it was stated that I didn't have the authorization, well, I never contacted anyone other than doing my own little research, never talked, spoke to Standard, and so I didn't know anything come from, but what I, what did reveal is that in, uh, is it October sixth of twenty fifteen, there was an agreement, and let me, let me grab it real quick, 'cause I do have it, um-
I wanna say, uh-
So let me read the following. So on October sixth of twenty fifteen, there's a letter that is being sent by Darryl Wells, this director of risk management, City of Odessa, and instructs that this email set forth, "Our understanding the process proposed of the annual renewal of employer-paid-for-life insurance, including accidental death, dismemberment, first responder, additional benefits also include limited retirement, life insurance for those retirees electing to continue coverage." As you know, this last RFP ish, uh, issued for the insurance coverage contained the following clause, "The City of Odessa, without limitation, as to a number of renewals, reserve the right to renew this coverage subject to mutual agreement with the expired insurer." Now, it quotes a state stat- a statute here, Local Government Code, and another document it bears upon renewal, that in section two-five-two-point-zero-two-four, selection of insurance broker in the Local Government Code, which states in part, "This chapter does not prevent a municipality from selecting licensed insured broker as the sole broker of record to obtain the proposals and coverage for in all risk, in all areas of risk requiring special consideration. The broker may retain only in fee basis and may not receive an annual remuneration from any other source." That's a state statute. This was passed by se- seventh legislature. Although life insurance is not specifically included in this section, neither is excluded. So, to the phrase, "Requiring a special consideration," Mr. Wells inserts, "I think we would all agree that trying to obtain life insurance with accidental death and first responder benefits definitely requires special consideration, because, given the limited market and tendency for life insurance to avoid public safety, employees generally to be even less enthusiastic about accidental death and first responder benefits." So bottom line, the market is narrowed in the first place and difficult second, and when combined with these problems related to wreath and death claims, adverse loss ratio make the whole process complex at best. So therefore, it is reasonable interpretation to conclude that this situation is best type of issue to contemplate in section two-five-two-point-zero-two-four, to note however, that the commissions and other remuneration are forbidden under this section, therefore, we propose that the remuneration should be on a fee basis negotiated. Normally, as life insurance premiums are paid monthly, on the basis of payroll reports, we transmit premiums to you and deduct your commissions, thus receiving a remuneration monthly as part of the premium transmitted. Okay, so in an effort to comply with this section, two-five-two-point-zero-two, two-four, the remuneration provision, we would propose that these fees be negotiated, also be paid monthly in conjunction with the premium payments in payroll. Now, I was unaware of this, I had no idea this existed, when I came to like to have this, I didn't know what it was, I, I had to ask so many questions, spoke to other people throughout the state to help me walk through me this, what, what am I seeing, what, so what am I doing, so? In essence, um, the analogy was given to me to be able to explain what, to help me understand this. I use a, a football analogy, that we have a football team, that team in the City of Odessa, it's just the employees and these benefit packages.
Yes, sir.
And trying to assess what is wrong with the team, new ownership comes in, it's revolving, and so in essence, you know, the coach has assigned his son without competition, without opening up the competition, he's now the quarterback indefinitely. And anyone associated to him is now the running back in every key positions from, uh, offense coordinator, defense coordinator, is all held within one entity. That has been now sold off, now there's a parent company. And so even if we, at the request of last year, basically ask, "Hey, let's go out and let's go shop this around," because there's a sole broker, it's Mr. Thompson, with STA Benefits Limited, they're only limited to, within what they have the capabilities to do, which is limited. I do have a list of what those are, and what those companies are. So even if we wanted to shop it, we can't, we can't go outside of the s- the broker record, which is- Uh, STA Benefits Limited, with, who is a, this is a city area that was bought out, they're associated with NFP. So I guess the question- So I guess the question is this, is that council, is that this was done in twenty, twenty fifteen. I, from this point, I can't assess if it goes forward, but it exists today.
Yes, sir.
And so I had requested the interim city manager to, to request some, uh, a, a, what's called a master policy. Never were able to ascertain that. It was in those discussions that basically started in May, for the last couple of weeks, requesting, city manager requested you, and, and it was in those discussion, we found out that you were the authorized center. So you always had the ability to ask for these, but you never did. You never called Standard, you never asked for these products. And, and, and it's okay, but the thing is, is that in order for, because my question was this, what authority does a risk manager or any director have to commit the city? Because is this a memo, memorandum of understanding is what I'm trying to ascertain? Is this a memorandum of understanding? And if we do have this, is there a contract on file? Does it exist within the city of Odessa? Do we have it? I've asked the attorneys, no one knows. I've asked the interim, I've asked everybody that, that based possibly here, nobody has any idea. In fact, staff now today that's in place didn't even was aware of this, that it existed. And so it, it, it's my opinion that I don't think that anyone should have an exclusivity. It was me that, that requested for the verbiage to be changed in, in, in the, uh, in the, uh, in this discussion.
Yes, sir.
To put in, because the thing is, is that the way it was, was put in, it was, it didn't have in, any discussion determining. I wanted that in specifically because I wanted to be able to speak about this. Because I, I really feel that we need to open this up and shop it around, but we can't do that because we're limited because of the broker on record. And and so if we eliminate that person and STA benefit or NFP, where everybody else comes in, and they're the best proposal, then let's go forward and let's do that. If that's the best bang for the buck, I'd like to know that, you know, if, if truly are we really being a, a fair assessment to all the employees. Because one of the things that I wind up having the discussion over this weekend, is one of the things that some of the employees came up to me and says, hey, look, I know that some time ago, we discussed it, is the council really going to look into this? I think that we, we really feel that we want to, but we're limited here because of this disagreement. The other thing is, is that one of the, aside from pay, the biggest thing that employees basically ask us this, is they're saying is, what are our benefits? What if, is what's insurance? That it goes hand in hand with pay if not, and sometimes even more so. And so finding this out, I think that I'm, I, I'm, I'm going to place in an emotion. And, uh, to, to address this issue. Now, I, I will tell you that this has been a very trying, uh, very stressful to, to find how, how to address this issue, how to put it in, 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 in the best, the best form. It hasn't been easy. So give me, give me a moment here because, uh, I should have prepared my notes, okay, right here. I don't think anybody should have an exclusivity. I think that we should, in order fairness, is to open it up. Uh, we are under a time crunch. I don't think that this being delayed as of May up to this point was an accident, I think it was deliberate, because it gives us a very small window in order to do this. And we have to do it fairly quickly.
Yes, sir.
Because of the September eleventh. I never knew, and counsel, one of the things is, is that this is up for renewal on an annual basis, and it's supposed to be done in September. This is the first I've heard of it. Uh, there, in that email, it was instructed that there was an intent to renew. And I don't know where September eleventh came up. And so in the po, in the, in upon hearing that, uh, I felt that we needed to go ahead and move, and I added this item to the agenda because of it. I'll just put up the, uh, let me just bring up the, 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 uh, I should have just pulled it up, I apologize, but, um, I do have the email, but it is in form of a, of a picture. I, I did request to have the, the form given to me, but I, I, I didn't move forward to, to ask about it. But in that, in, in that email, basically, it, it, it says that there was, they're giving you a heads up, and that we have every intent to renew. I asked what, what, what that was. And it was the intent to renew for the, uh, broker record. And so, um, I wind up asking the staff, can you basically inform me what that, does that mean? He said, well, it looks like under this section, the city can go and have a sole, uh, a broker record on file. And so basically is, it doesn't allow us to really shop the products and have multiple companies because we're limited to one, and, 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 and the, those that we can shop is through just that broker. And so, um, so counsel, th, this is what I'm proposing. I'm going to make a motion that the city council, as do, uh, as does the mayor of the city of Odessa, instructs the authorized signer or signers, which in this case is Delia Ortiz and Roxanne Wimbley, of record for the risk management city of Odessa Texas Corporation, and a, any and all of the city of Odessa employees, to communicate in all forms via letter, mail, electronic mail, verbal, voice recorded, any other forms of communication, both known and unknown, to city manager, city council, then that they be instructed to STA benefits, to STA limited, and to NFP. With the intent to cancel any and all, known and unknown, disclosed, undisclosed, both prev, previously and soon to be executed, authorized, unauthorized, agreed upon, negotiated, signed and soon to be signed and executed in existence, not in existence, any all known and unknown memorandum of understandings, contractual agreements in existing with NFP, corporation, insurance, limited LLC, STA benefits, STA limited, any and all parent companies of NFP, STA benefits, STA limited, any sub-agencies, affiliates, sister cities, subcontractors, any employees that are employed by all mentioned above, NFP and STA benefits, STA limited, parent companies, and sub-agencies and affiliate sister and subcontractors, that renewal is revoked, canceled, terminated as a conclusion if a majority of vote in favor by the city council. Also, city council instruct risk management Delia Ortiz and Roxanne Wimbley to request from Standard the following. An official master policy, a master policy census, any and all policies, applications, supporting documentation of lost claims, information to the city of Odessa. And to be also, to add the city manager as an authorized signer in any o, other, um, pertinent leadership of the city of Odessa. In my different stints in different councils that I've served on, I've never seen where any agreement subjets and goes around a city manager. The interim city manager while he served was unable in any form or fashion to be able to ta, obtain any of this information. A master policy is all the benefits that, that the employees are buying. The master cen, a policy census, to my best knowledge, is everybody that's on there. I know that the interim city manager requested everything, and also to have the employees blocked out so all you're identifying is just the products. That was denied and blocked at every aspect. Any of the policy and application and supporting documents and lost claims were also denied. For the reason is that the CEO of this, uh, of this corporation is, is the mayor's office, not me, it's the mayor's office, does not have the authority, but neither did the city manager, or any assistant city manager, or deputy city manager interim, the lawyer, no one other than the two people mentioned here. But the thing is, is that we don't have a contract on site, and two, the master policy has to be on file. It's not here in the city, so is it with the broker? Don't know. It's so, it's concerning for the reason is that, uh, there are a lot of things that it, it's been set up. Um, there's, let me, let me put this out, there has been no laws broken. This is all legal, okay? State, uh, government code allows this, but it also allows a exclusivity. And I think we as council should really consider that. I'm gonna, I made that in a motion to, to, to be executed. I will ask for a second, and then I'll open it up for discussion. And anybody wish to, if not, then it'll just die a lack of a motion.
In that, just so I can understand what that motion is.
Mm-hmm.
Is it asking for all the information that's been requested?
Yes, so basically what I'm asking here and simplifying is I am ask, asking the council, my motion is to cancel the, uh, broker record.
Okay.
Uh, basically, how it is approved through, uh, the, uh, government code. In the government code, which is the, uh, section two-five, of two-five-two-point-zero-two-four. This chapter does, and, and this basically says, it does not prevent the municipality of selecting a licensed insured broker as the sole broker of record to obtain proposals and coverage. So basically is, this broker can go out there and shop if it's life insurance, uh, uh, accidental death, and, and it basically, it, it, it talks about accidental death, first responder be, uh, benefits. Uh, you know, and, and this is a very close market, there, it's, it's very narrow of who provides this stuff. And so the thing is, is that, but when we had the discussion last year, we did not know this existed. And so I thought this simply that Delia would be able to go out, send out and get the offers. But can't do that because it's got to go through the broker, and only with the broker, with, when, then they're never aware of what, who they can work with, is that's all you got to be able to work with. So no other broker, no other, nobody else can come in, legally they cannot do, they're the only ones.
So this doesn't.
And, and Standard can only release these forms that we're asking for to that sole broker. And so we can't obtain anything. And, 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 and the authorized standard can do, can do so, and that has not occurred here. And so I feel that we're in, in the position that, you know, we just have to not accept the renewal, cancel it as a, uh, you know, well, I made the motion.
So this just cancels the sole broker, but it doesn't cancel their policy or no?
All that's in place, is, am I correct?
Correct, yes, sir, you are correct.
And so you're going to, so basically, when, when do you usually go shopping for, for, you know, the products, and when do they get shopped around?
Uh, around this time.
Around this time.
Yes, sir, we start looking into, and like I said, the renewals, usually the person that's holding the policy, because they have all the information they need, they try to make a proposal renewal to you, you know, they have the upper hand because they have all the information. But that doesn't mean we have to accept the renewal, and especially with, uh, STA, because their contract, the three-year contract expires.
Broker doesn't provide the insurance, broker just goes out and says, hey, you want to bid on this?
Yes, yes.
That, that's basically what broker does.
So with this motion, it basically just gives us the authority to cast a bigger net, just?
Yes, yes, and that is what we want to do, yes.
Yes, yes, that's, that's, that's what I'm requesting. But I want to be specific for the reason why I, I went to this extent, as I sat here today and, and, and was writing out the motion. It's because there's something, I, I don't know what else is type of agreements that exist. Um, I just want to be able to be as transparent and cast a white net and sit there and say, well, we can't do that because, and your motion didn't cover this specific thing. And so I'm trying to think of things that, uh, of what I don't see outside my, uh, of my, of my purview.
Yes.
And the city manager shouldn't be locked out of anything.
Yes.
If I may, an easy way to look at it, all this cancels tonight is the, the exclusive professional services agreement with the broker. It doesn't cancel any, it doesn't preclude them from offering another, another triatic.
Yes.
Right.
It doesn't do anything, but you will no longer be in that exclusive agreement. And you don't lose your insurance, so.
No, I understand, I just want to make sure that.
Our policy, no, our policy stands till the end of the year.
Well, the thing is, is that, um, you know, that's why I use the football analogy, because I have no other way to be able to explain it, understand it. Um, you know, we're a football team, and that's, and, and a football town.
Everybody understands that, yes, sir.
I can come up with. But in no essence, there's no wrongdoing, things of that nature, it's just that, you know, we, it, it just basically takes out the exclusivity, and yes, it allows it to cast a wider net, so to speak.
Professional services.
Yes, professional service agreement. And, uh, you know, it, it, it is, uh, and, and also to, I wanted to make it in the motion to, to request the following things, which, once again, is the master policy, the master policy census, any and all applications pointing to documentation, and the lost claims information. Uh, I think it's important to be able to see, you know, when the bro, any brokers that sit there and, and cast it out so they can make, uh, a, a fair, a fair assessment, a more accurate assessment
Yes, sir.
of, of products that they're, you know, that they can come and present to the.
What are they competing against? Yeah, exactly, yeah, they need that information.
Yeah. And so, um, a, any other questions? Any other comments?
You know, I just, my comment is, being in charge of risk management, did you not ever wonder where the policies were at?
I do have some policies, and, um, I have provided them through email. And I also, uh, what I have from, um, it's standard cost of specimen policy, and it's detailed about what the premiums are, what the benefit is.
Their agree, that their agreement we're still missing?
The agreement.
Between the insurance broker and just the policies.
What do you mean?
What she, you're saying, risk man, they haven't been able to, nobody's been able to provide these records to you. I just was wondering, in, in her profession, is, is that not a red flag that
Oh, um.
they've not been able to be provided to you when you've asked, and you've asked over and over?
Well, in, in order to, uh, obtain like the master policy and the master policy census is the only, the, the authorized signers are the only one else to be able to obtain that. And, uh, this has been, uh, a, a, and that's why I asked the question, you know, what is the authorized signer? How did you become the authorized signer? Were you the authorized signer while the risk manager was still employed? And obviously he had fallen ill. And so you, it, both you, you and Roxanne Wimbley have been in this role, uh, twenty-one?
Representative, yes, sir, twenty-two.
Okay, and so, and in the time that we wind up making, you know, last year when we were talking about this, I, I, I'm safe to, to probably say this, that you were probably unaware of some of these things.
Some of them, and I've, I've been, you know, with being the new risk manager, that's what I was going to propose, you know, let's start fresh. Let me recommend what I know of what's the standard nowadays. You know, what the broker of record, that's still the best way to go. It's got its pros and its cons, to be honest with you. Um, you know, because our limitations, when we go out and put out a proposal, we might not be able to interact with some of these people that want to make a proposal, the broker of record can do that. So, but again, it limits you.
Yeah.
So pros and cons to everything, so we would just have to.
I know Delia's in agreement to be able to sit there and say, is that, you know, we end the professional services? And, uh, and then gives us.
Go forward with what's best for the city now.
Process and go out there and, and do, do a due diligence.
Yes.
So to speak. Um, and so it, it, it's been, it's been a big learning curve, we tried to understand this. And, and speaking to, you know, just other colleagues of, uh, how have you dealt with it? What's your policies, how does this exist? Jack, when, I don't know if you want to say something? Okay, come on.
Mayor, council, um, it just should be noted that, uh, Darrell did, um, did control the, the department, I mean, in, and he did instruct, um, basically Delia to do, uh, perform signatures and so forth, but. perform signatures and so forth, but Daryl ran the department. And he, Daryl ran it for many, many years, many years. And as we all know, he passed away running the department. So, um, a lot of this that we're finding out, um, because we didn't know what Daryl was doing. And, um, as we're starting to understand a little bit about what the department is, is supposed to be doing and what it's required to do, um, it, it really is, um, eye-opening just to understand what's going on. Oh, just to understand. And for many, many years, we depended on Daryl. And, um, just to Delia's credit, um, that's the way it was run.
Yeah, and, 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 and and Mr. Bernard is correct, you know, we had these several discussions and I said, we, we, we just need help to understand. Mr. Ortiz has been helpful in, in understanding, think there's been learning curves for all of us in this whole situation. Not trying to point fingers, put, put blank. It's just we're trying to understand, you know, as we unwind a lot of things from one department to another department, how things were ran. Is we're trying to assess and we're trying to start over and be transparent here. And this is what we're, we're, we're after. I know Mr. Ortiz is, is definitely wanting to do this. I know that the staff is working towards this, this aspect, they've been cooperative and, uh, and we are where we are today. I know I didn't want to go forward, uh, and, and take it into September, I just felt that we needed to go ahead and do this tonight. Um, and this is why, I, I'm not gonna ask the council to make a motion, this is why I'm taking upon myself to make this motion. Um, I have been the, the person that, that, that went forward with this. I've, I've been doing my research. Uh, I hadn't informed anybody on the council one-on-one at any point or any nature for the reason is that I was trying to understand it. And I felt that this conversation only had, could only take place here. And so I didn't want to put it on the work session because I wanted to go ahead and go forward with, with, with action and then, and, and making that proposal to terminate the professional services, uh, for the broker of record. And so, um, I stand by my motion one more time. And, uh, and I would ask for, uh, I'm requesting a se- uh, second, if there is a second to be had. If not, then, um, then it will die for a lack of a second and then we'll continue the conversation forward.
On the, on the legality of it, if I, we have Mr. Jones, sounds okay to me, I have certainly a second.
There, there was, there was nothing illegal about this.
I think it needs to be cleaned up, what's that?
Tomorrow, if, if Delia goes out and finds, uh, another, uh, broker and says, hey, this is who I think we should go with, or three brokers or whatever, it can be done. It's just like hiring your attorney, it's a professional service. You, there's nothing illegal about it, nothing illegal, the past was done and nothing now.
It just broadens the net where it should be, where it should be, and I, I would second on that motion.
Counsel, any other further discussion, comment? There is no, uh, discussion or comment, um, we have a motion and a second to cancel the, uh, the professional services for the broker on record and to instruct, uh, the, uh, authorized signer of record, both, uh, Delia Ortiz, Roxanne Wimbler, with instruction to officially request a master policy, master policy census, any and all policy, the application, supporting documentation, loss claims information to the city of Odessa, to the city manager and to the, uh, and to the, uh, deputy city manager and to the, uh, city, city of Odessa attorney. Uh, all those in, in favor indicating by the, by, uh, a raise of hands in the affirm, by raising hand in, in the affirm for the motion. All against, by saying aye?
I want to stand by abstain.
Okay.
Abstain?
Okay. Uh, motion passes, uh, five in favor to abstentions. Mr. Ortiz, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, thank you for your cooperation. Uh, we're gonna move on to Appointment of boards, Mr. City Secretary?
Yes, counsel for the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, Thomas Blackstone and Connie Coates, uh, are willing to serve again if counsel wishes to reappoint.
Um, counsel, any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I need a motion? I have a motion by council member, uh, Amata, second by council member Hany, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay?
The only thing I, the, the next one is on the tax increment, should we just null and void that anymore or what happens?
No action is-
We've already taken action on dissolving the, uh, the board, so there's nothing to appoint there. I scratched, I don't mind, but I don't know what I did with my agenda. Okay, let me get back to that. Next, what do we got? Okay, so item eighteen, executive session authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, one A and B. Consult, uh, consult with attorneys, city council may adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation. Sentiment offered to the city attorney, attorney hired by the city of Odessa in case of Jacob Andrew Union, Rachel Marie Song, property of the city of Odessa, case number. Uh, do I have a motion to get into second session?
So moved.
And motion by council member Swan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Hany, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passes, we are in the decision, we will return.
Seeing that we took no action in executive session, I will entertain a motion to come back to general session.
I saw move.
A motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, I'll indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. I will entertain a motion, uh, and a second to approve payment to Jacob Muniz of two hundred and thirty-two do- two hundred and thirty-two thousand and sixteen dollars. Council, I have a motion and a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Request a motion and second to approve a payment to recall Raquel Stonecalf of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Swann, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All against indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Request a motion and second for approval of payment of five thousand dollars to the minor LS. I have a motion by Councilmember Mata.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All against indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Motion by Councilmember Cornell, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Seeing that there is no more business before the city council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Swann, second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All against indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.